Question, there's no point.
Well, no, I mean, I was just curious if she-
You have your time. She just arrested a number, Mr. DiGiulio.
But, you know, I'm curious how many years these people had that got these small pensions? How many years employment? Because I know people in the city with 10 years of employment that get more pension than I get for 32.
She just-
I'm just curious, you know, how many years they had.
Some of them are 30 years.
And they get a small pension like you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
How small is it, please?
Below poverty level, which is, is less than $1,100.
Less than $1,100?
Some of them are way less than that.
And they have 30 years, my goodness.
Let's move forward.
Hi, I'm Darlene Cox, I live in O'Connor.
And I'm Angie, and I'm her neighbor.
Hold the mic closer.
We have a tree on the city property at my address that is dead and has been dead. We've been calling for over three years on it. It's now, the dead part is now split up the middle. A wind or something's gonna take it down on somebody's house, somebody's car, a child. We had a limb that blew off in a windstorm and went through her awning. And they had to get repairs done on that, at their expense.
The city, you know, you guys want more money for taxes, but it's our money that paid the deductible to have it fixed because we've been calling on the tree for over three years. And, I mean, I'm worried about my children, there's children that go up and down the street. I have pictures on my phone, I have my insurance claim, if you want, any time after the meeting.
Tell us, you didn't tell us the address.
1-5899.
And, like I said, we've been calling-
O'Connor.
We've been calling, we've left messages, we've called, called, called diligently for over three years, and we just, all we get is, "We're on the list, we're on the list." That's what we've heard. My husband actually came up here after the whole filing of the claim, spoke with the mayor's assistant, it was a female, and she said, "I will check, I will see where you're on the list, and I will call you back." We never received a call back. So that's just, that's why we're here, is because it's split, I've got pictures, and we can't even park in our driveway, we have to pull up next to the house because they keep falling everywhere. And I mean, I don't want one of my children to be killed by one of these big branches because it's not a small tree, it's not a trim tree, it is split bottom to top.
Well, let us go back and look again, because they do go and look at all the dead trees, and you have to know right now, I think there's, the list is about 1,200, is that right, Mr. Morton?
Probably.
Mr. Mayor?
It's about 1,200, and, yeah. And I know we're behind. I understand that, some of them go back four years, and they change them around depending on what they think has the greatest danger.
Okay, well, maybe they want to come back and look now that it's split and it's gonna go-
That's what I'm saying.
Right in half.
Let us do that.
Mayor, I went over there yesterday and looked at the problem on their street there, and that tree is in bad shape, it damaged their house, their insurance company has told them that they will not cover you if something else happens again unless the tree is taken down. Not only that one, but right around the corner from them in Euclid is a huge tree that's completely dead. Mr. Morton, can you address these ladies? I know I called you this morning about their problem.
The number, what was the street?
O'Connor.
1-899, we're all over.
John, I'm asking for a bank-
We'll take a look at it.
We'll be a switch for you. We'll follow up again, I'm just-
We also have another problem. We had a water main break right across the street from my house. And they came out and fixed it, and we have a big hole, and, I mean, the mud is just everywhere, the branch, the tree roots are coming out. Kids run through the park, they're gonna get, they're gonna get hurt. They didn't even fill it in, and my husband is thinking about going over there and filling it in.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Mayor. How many trees have we removed this year since January 1st? Do you have any idea, Doug?
I'd have to look.
I mean, obviously, if they're that damaged, does anybody know, is there anybody out there? I mean, there's not many people in public works, I understand that, but is there a tree truck still out there that's doing this stuff?
Occasionally. We have a, we have a list, and we're tracking it, and actually, right now, we have, when we can get a crew, we're out trimming and cutting trees.
At the park across the street, along the creek? You guys were there trimming moles?
Yeah, by the railroad, where are the railroads, is there's a creek, and they were trimming trees over there. And if they fall on anything, what are they gonna fall on? The creek?
Was that the city doing it, or was that the railroad people doing that?
I think it was the city truck.
It was the city, because they pulled up into the park.
Yeah, they pulled up onto the grass.
Yes, Ms. Parker has her hand up. Far be it for me to stop.
I was just going to contact, comment that I have spoken to a couple of residents related to the same issue of the waiting list, and, you know, the reality of whether the city is ever gonna get through that list. And one of the areas that we're gonna be reevaluating is the waiting list. What's happened, I think, over the years is that the city has downsized with staffing, which has created some problems with getting certain things done. So part of what we need to do is kind of reevaluate, you know, other options to address situations like that with tree trimming, or the removal of trees, and then to identify funding. So I indicated to the other residents that we're gonna take a look at that and get something back to the mayor and the council, and have a discussion at a council meeting.
Okay, well, I mean, if you hired, like, two new ordinance people, I mean, nobody's gonna die from the grass that's a little bit too long, I mean, somebody will die from the tree coming down, and I would hate for it to be one of my kids, because I would not be happy, and I believe everybody would hear it, it's one of my children.
No, I agree, and I think that's something that needs to be addressed, and we will take a look at it and see what other options are available. You know, you mentioned the ordinance officer situation, and this year, we did add two people to try to address issues of blight in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Parker, just so you're aware, I can recall for the last several years before we had the serious cuts in public works, the same very questions, people coming here meeting after meeting, talking about their rotten trees in the front yard and stuff like that. And it's, I think it's emblematic of the kinds of institutional, what do you, what you call it, malaise or whatever, there's a kind of a feeling. Now, we hear John Menzinger back there jumping up, and I suppose maybe we can expect to see him on the tree truck tomorrow, because frankly, I'm sure we can find somebody else to deliver the mail around here, John, maybe that'd be something you could work on.
All over.
Yeah, that's great. So maybe we'll put him, there's a guy who's volunteering to do some work for it, you think, that'd be great.
Ray Mcgusson, Quant, good evening. I got three minutes, so I might ask a couple of questions, and I like my questions to be answered when I get done. Couple of things, just to clear up a couple, couple of things here. We, the citizens of Allen Park, pay 49.6 mils. That's what we pay total. It's not only three, or five, or 10, or whatever, it's 49.6. That includes everything. That includes the county and everybody else, and the school. A lot of us are homesteaders, so there is money that we are not paying, okay? Real fast, Ms. Parker, Mr. Mayor through the chair, Ms. Parker. In the year 1993, the average resident sales price was $79,679. 10 years later, in the year 2003, the average sales price was $146,313. That's what can happen in 10 years. Super inflated prices on our homes, for whatever reason. In the year 2013, I can't say, I don't have it here. But in the year 2011, the average sales price was $83,693. What a drop, approximately $80,000. Okay? Yes, in 10 years, a lot can happen. In 10 years, our house prices can go up, and in 10 years, our house prices have definitely gone down. So the next 10 years, where do we go? We are going up. There's municipalities and cities throughout our state right now that have said that they will not be raising no more mils because their houses' prices are going up. So we all know that. So there's just some clarification. Here's my questions, just to clarify some things, to clarify to all the citizens. Please, inform the citizens of what you make. Inform the citizens really and truly, what are your benefits? Some of them think many different things. Inform the citizens right now, how many city employees do we pay FICA to? That they do collect social security, that they will be collecting social security. Maybe some of them are not, maybe some of them will not, but I like that answered, okay? We need our police officers, and we need our firemen, and we definitely need our city public works people and administrators here, and we need you. We need you all to work together. As a citizen, I need you to work together. This is a couple of things our citizens need, would like. We'd like you to be physically conservative, conserve our taxpayers' money. We don't really know what's happening, but I know one thing, a lot of citizens do not like, and even though our police officers and firemen deserve, and all of our people here deserve a good pay, and they deserve a good pension, they deserve it, but not after eight years, not after 10, and not after 20. 30 years, yes, 25 years, yes, but for us citizens, to have to pay pension based on overtime, that's where the overtime problem comes in. That's what we, the citizens, I firmly believe, would like you to take, to take care of. You're involved. I'm trying to get involved. My heart and soul's in this game. I'm a citizen. I've been a citizen for 37 years. I want my roads taken care of. We don't need trees falling down, they look like hell, and they can hurt people. They can hurt my kids, or any of our citizens, they can even hurt you, Mr. Mayor. So let's work together, like it was said, let's work together. But let's be, you run this city. You determine how, what benefits are given. You wanna give me the benefits that you have given these other people in five years, you know what? I'll take a two. I wouldn't turn it down. Thank you very much for your time, have a great day. If you please can, answer my questions.
The, we'll take the mayor and council's pay, the council, each council person receives $2,700 annually.
$2,250.
$2,250.
$2,250.
I believe you got cut in pay, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I forgot the 10% that was done originally by the comp commission.
That's right.
I think mine's 5,400, but it could be 4,800, I don't, I don't know.
We get no benefits.
There are, yeah, there are no benefits. I would just say, you quoted 93 to 2003 on the housing sales, and it's interesting to note, because the charter millage for Allen Park is 12 and 1/2 mils, and we levy 10-point mils. 2 and 1/2 mils because of that rapid increase in house prices under the Headley limitations limited all tax increases by about 17, reduced it by about 17%. All the millages were reduced by about 17% during that period of time. So, and Headley still applies. If we have, if we have some rapid type of house price increases, Headley will not allow us to go beyond the rate of inflation or 5%, whichever is less. And right now, inflation is running about 1.4%. So there isn't likely, under Headley, a rapid increase in anybody's taxes through appreciation of their property. And this year, although our property tax revenue will go up slightly, that's because of a lawsuit we won against the Ford Motor Company on personal property. Real property taxes for residential still decline by about 2%, so.
FICA?
Yes, we have to pay FICA on ours.
So do all of our employees collect social security?
Yes.
I'm just asking.
Yes.
I'm just clearing it up for citizens out there.
The point you're making, the point you're making is some communities, I think Southgate's public service workers don't get social security because they don't contribute. Here, our people contribute, and we contribute, it's a shared, they put in 6 and 1/2%, we put in 6 or 7%.
Only reason why I was approached by one individual that told me that they do not make, that they do not collect social security.
No.
So that's, all I'm trying to do is just clear it up for the ones who are not really sure. Well, thank you very much, have a great day.
You know eventually I was gonna get around you guys' pay. A school board member in Allen Parks gets $760 a year. Okay, right now, whose job more important, your job or a school board member in Allen Park? The Melvindale School System, I get paid $360 a year, and we have another member from the Melvindale Allen Park. So, I guess, are you guys worth $2,400? You know, I don't know, I mean, I'm just, I know I'm worth $360, but I know Alex, he's worth $360.
Just barely, though.
So I want you guys to take a serious thinking about that, are you worth $2500? If you think you're not, just take no pay, or just cut, cut your own pay.
I agree with you. So-
Ms. Parker should cut us to zero, there's no problem with that. I offered to go half, six months ago, and everybody else didn't want to do it.
Well, that's, that's your choice, I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be your choice what you want to do.
I think Ms. Parker should cut us to zero.
Well, I don't, I don't know, I think you guys will vote on it, you know.
I don't have a problem with that. You know, I've talked to you about that before, I don't have a problem with it.
Or maybe I need a pay increase, maybe that's what I need. But anyway, I'll tell you guys, thank you.
Evening, Mayor and Council, Wayne Aubrey, Allen Park citizen. Mr. Kenny, I just want to say thank you for doing your due diligence and, and working hard in finding those numbers, and clarifying some things on overtime. You know, it's, it's been a long time, people have really turned this into a negative, making statements about overtime, inflated overtime, that the millage won't pass because of overtime. So I do appreciate the fact that you took time to run those numbers, to explain it to people, instead of just throwing numbers out. I don't think it's fair for people to attack those numbers or question them unless they've done their due diligence and, and run numbers too. And Mr. Hayes, with your question about overtime and alcohol enforcement, you are correct that it would be more efficient for guys that are working already, straight time, to make those enforcement stops and alcohol stops. Just, just so you know, an alcohol-related stop, they are being done on the road, traffic stops are be done by the regular shift guys. When you get into an alcohol-related stop and arrest, it takes you off the road for two to three hours. If, if that person refuses a breath test, and you have to get a search warrant and go to the hospital with them, now you're off the road for three to four hours. You have to take another officer with you to the hospital. And you understand how many are running on the road in Allen Park, most of the time, three officers. So you can see the problem with delegating and making all of the traffic enforcement and alcohol enforcement on the shift level. That's why they created this overtime traffic detail, dedicated officers that are solely out there trying to make the road safer, stopping the people that are drunk driving and the people that have warrants. Those guys are the ones out there that are making those traffic stops, hence allowing the three officers that are on the road to actually ride and, and drive the side streets looking for that crime. So that's, hopefully that maybe gives you a little bit of explanation of why there is that overtime. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Al Wajinski. I live on Vine Avenue, Harry. I see people changing tires in the parking lot every day. Through the chair to Ms. Parker, how are the negotiations on the hill going about us getting paid for our police and fire there?
Actually, we're still trying to organize a meeting with the owners there, and so that process is underway.
Okay, might as well get to the one that somebody, oh, what's going on next door? What is happening? With the property next door, what's going on?
Well, the property next door has been listed with CBRE Real Estate as the broker, and they are marketing the property through a number of avenues right now, and it's also on their website. You know, we've had some activity, but we have not received a proposal that has been acceptable to the city. We're also looking at some other options related to marketing the property. And, you know, thirdly, we're working with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation related to marketing nationwide related to the property as well. And the fourth area is just in reference to the State of Michigan Department of Treasury working with me and the city related to the bond issue, to see if there's, there's an opportunity to reduce the cost. And so that process is underway.
So in other words, there's been no, nothing's happened next door?
No, I wouldn't go as far as to say nothing has happened. I think with one of the inquiries, we're, we're doing some due diligence to determine whether it's something that would work for the city. We've had some activity that's somewhat positive.
Okay, next question through the chair to Ms. Parker. What about the SAFER grant? We accepted the SAFER grant, why, are we, or are we not gonna take the SAFER grant?
We did accept the SAFER grant, and, you know, the intent is to use that to offset some of the expenses related to the fire department.
Then why on your plan for July or August, does it say we're gonna eliminate 10, 12 firefighters? You cannot, according to SAF, what I read on the SAFER grant, you can't lay those firefighters off if you're taking the SAFER grant. The only way you can lay those firefighters off is you give back the SAFER grant money.
Well, I'm not really able to discuss that tonight at the meeting, but, you know, we are having some discussions about the SAFER grant.
Okay, because I've been, I've had plenty, I've had plenty of time, you know, sitting home, laid up. Okay, another question through the chair to Ms. Parker. Are you in negotiation with any ambulance companies to take over our EMS, ALS service?
We are in the process of requesting proposals related to EMS services, as part of the overall effort related to Plan B, you know, in the event that the millage does not pass.
Okay, and how's the negotiations going with the police-fire? I know you can't comment.
I really can't comment.
That's what I figured, okay. You know, so far, I mean, you've got income, we need more officers on the road. That's, that's flat out, we need more cops, or, I mean, excuse me, officers. And-
Mr. Wajinski?
How much?
Your time is up, as they say.
Shoot, I got more questions.
Well, we'll be here again.
Oh, believe me, I will be back, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Cod. I don't know how, like, how the city council meetings, like, how they go on to, like, Wow or Comcast, but Allen Parks are not advertised on U-verse. And I don't work for U-verse or anything, but they have a great program on their cable, I just love their cable.
Is that Comcast?
No, it's through AT&amp;T.
It's AT&amp;T, but they wanted $300,000 to pu, to put our videos on at one time, I don't know if that would still be the number, but they, the other companies put it on at no cost to the city.
Okay.
We have to do the production, but AT&amp;T was not willing to do that, and that's why it's not in the U-verse homes in the city.
Okay, yeah, I don't know what it is now, but like, when you go on there, like, you know, like, I can go to any cities that's on there, like Birmingham, I even see sometimes, Flat Rock, Southgate, and you can press the button, and you can watch their city council meeting anytime you want to, it's not just at a set time, it's not just for your city. So it's just, you know, it's, it's just a cool feature on it, but, all right, I just didn't know if it was something we could do or not.
You should call your provider and, and demand that they do it without charge.
Oh, I don't have time for that.
Okay.
You do it.
I don't have U-verse.
You can do it tomorrow. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Brian Devoe, Allen Park. Couple of concerns regarding the 10 years, the decade-long millage. I would think that all of you here would believe that the deficit elimination plan was an important document. I pulled this off today from the internet, from the website, and I'm looking at the page 13 that contains the numbers. And I'm looking at the years ending, it's fiscal years ending in June, I'm looking at 14, 15, 16, and 17, and coincidentally, all the revenue is identical for all those four years. Every category, subcategory, all the revenues completely the same. You take a look at the expenses for every subcategory, the expenses are all identical. And coincidentally, the revenue for the four years from 2014 through 2017 is 700,000, each year 700,000 higher than the expenses. Well, I'm insulted by this report. There's no, when you ever see people that just copy and paste columns or numbers, what that tells me is they're either too lazy to do the job correctly, or they don't care, they don't give any thought to what the numbers actually are. Are you trying to tell me that there's no inflation involved with any of those years? That the property values are gonna be identical, the same? It's impossible. You expect us to trust you with a 10-year millage when we can't even trust you to fill out a document correctly? Another example for, for the 10 years is a wrong way of going. City Livonia, they passed a couple of years ago a police millage. This past week, or last week, they tried to give bonuses, and went up to their council table, $25,000 bonuses to each one of the senior police people, $25,000. Now, the people didn't vote for a millage to give out $25,000 bonuses, but the point is, and by the way, it was turned down by the council, the point is, all it would have taken was four people on that council to think that was a good idea, despite whatever the citizens wanted. My point is, for over a 10-year period of time, that could happen here in Allen Park. There's no guarantee of what's gonna happen with that money. Once a millage is passed, it's completely out of the taxpayers' hands. There's nothing we can do about it, we can come up here and complain, but the bottom line is, the decision rests on the table up there, and we have absolutely no control over that money. There's no checks and balances. I truly believe that if you demonstrate some results with the police and fire, with the compensation, and with the legacy costs, and then you come back to us with a two-year program, and you clean up these, these reports that are useless with the numbers on them, you come back to us with a two-year program, and let us review to see when or not you're doing a good job with the money. If you're doing a good job, we'll prove it, and then let us come back two years later. If you're doing a good job with the money, then there's a chance to take a look at and see if it's approvable or not. But going for 10 years with totally out of our control, you can spend the money, whatever you wanted to spend the money on, is absolutely ridiculous. We need to have the control over it. The taxpayers need to have the say of what's happening with their money. We don't want bureaucrats 10 years down the road, several elections down the road, who knows who's gonna be sitting up there making these decisions? I don't need to remind you that, that this panel, not this panel, but another panel thought buying a movie studio was a good idea. Who's to say that's not gonna happen 10 years from now? There's no commitments. And oh, by the way, it doesn't matter what we paid for taxes six years ago, five years ago, what makes a difference is what we pay today, what we're gonna pay tomorrow. How many people have less money today than what they had five years ago? Is that considered? Gasoline was a dollar 60 in 2008. What do we pay now for gasoline? It doesn't make a difference. Thank you for your time.
Good evening to everyone, I'm Veronica Fraser, I live on Cleveland.
And I'm Peggy Brennan, I also live on Cleveland.
I was here last summer about the ordinance issue, and, do we have ordinance- Um, I was here last summer about the ordinance issue and, do we have ordinance officers currently?
We have two new officers, part-time.
Okay.
And so they've got them set up, I think, I don't see Mr. Boomer...
Started about a month ago.
Mr. Boomer in the audience, but I, but I think they're actually working seven days a week.
Well, our issue was last year, Mr. Boomer said he was going to be the one that was in charge of our situation on Cleveland. I brought some pictures with me. I don't know if I can share them with you because I don't think every, anyone understands what we as neighbors have in the middle of us. It's a lot and a half, two lots. Mr. DiGiulio came to my house last summer so he could see it and nothing was done last year. A window was fixed, there's still a tree, 30-foot tree that fell last April that was partially trimmed, it's still on the ground, there's no grass, there are weeds taller than your house.
The address?
15266 Cleveland.
15266 Cleveland.
Is this where the elderly lady lives?
Yes.
In that house?
Um, and I, I just want to go on record for saying that this has been an ongoing situation for about seven years and we have been to this meeting before, addressed a different panel, and they promised some sort of resolution and the, the problem has never been addressed. And I, I am very, I'm a very compassionate person, I understand the situation, however, there, there are ordinances that need to be put in place, or that are in place that need to be enforced and we're asking for some more support in getting those enforced, whether it be a volunteer organization that comes out and helps her or some other avenue with trying to get the, the property fixed because it's, it's become an eyesore and it's a nuisance and it, I'm just totally frustrated.
We are. It's out of control. And I wish, can I hand these pictures up?
Come down and give them to Ms. Armstrong, she'll pass them past the council.
Mr. Boomer emailed me a couple of days ago that he was going to send an ordinance officer out, but again, we had an ordinance officer out last fall and nothing was done. She was written up, she fixed a broken window, but the tree's still down and there's nothing but weeds in the backyard. Nothing.
But, and they're above the foot?
Oh!
Oh, they're taller than me.
They're trees, some of them are trees.
Yeah, I went, I went out there last year too. I didn't come knocking on anybody's door, but I know exactly what you're talking about. It makes it a little bit more difficult when there's actually a person living there. If it was an abandoned house, you know, then, you know, it's, it's kind of hard, but we do, and I'm not justifying it, don't misunderstand, but, you know, up until, like I said, a month ago, we had one ordinance officer and his primary function was running the animal shelter and what have you. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but we, we've, we've combined animal shelters with South Gate and Wyandotte, we no longer have that responsibility and we have the two guys. I was actually in the building department, I think it was last Tuesday, and they had four pages already of houses where they had marked down, you know, for grass cutting and stuff like that.
Again, this isn't grass cutting and this has been ongoing.
Right.
And last year, when I came to the council meeting, I invited everybody to my house so they could see the situation. It's like walking into a forest and it affects our property values. If we wanted to sell our homes, the leaves end up in our yards, in our eaves, and if they were trees, it would be one thing, but they aren't.
Maybe Mr. Granow can...
I have just one other question.
...on a situation like that, our city attorney?
Okay. I, my question is, the, the ordinance that, as it stated, says that it's, that your weeds cannot be greater than one foot, it doesn't say your weeds can't be greater than one foot if it's an unoccupied property?
True.
Right?
That's absolutely true.
Okay, so, so being an occupied property doesn't have anything to do with whether or not the ordinance gets enforced, correct?
No, that's true. But, yeah, I was talking more about broken windows, trouting down trees and stuff like that. The, the grass cutting, I mean, I'm a, you're, you're saying that the grass never got cut at all last year, not one time?
Well, there's a little bit of grass in the front and that is cut, but the rest is property.
I'm talking about that, yeah, the, the lot that's between the two houses and the, the property behind the house, they're, I mean, it's total overgrowth.
No grass, none.
And that's all her property?
Right.
Yes. I'm not sure if it's a double lot or a lot and a half, but it's a large lot.
I thought it was resolved when I didn't hear from you anymore.
No, not resolving.
But I thought it would be resolved and now we're waiting for an ordinance officer again.
We have new ordinance officers and I'm hoping they'll come out.
When they were there last year and never addressed it last year or the year before.
We've had a lot of turnover in ordinance officers. I, I would hope that we're going to have some stability and I, I think you'll see some, some good.
But Mr. Boomer said that he was going to handle it.
I understand.
Okay.
He doesn't, he doesn't handle ordinances, but he, he would direct them to come out there.
But this property he was very familiar with in dealing with in 2006.
Absolutely. I remember the discussion. Yep. I remember the discussion. We'll get with him.
Thank you.
If you could stick around, I'll talk to you after.
Dr. Bob from Allen Park, good evening. I wanted to find out why we haven't gone after CBRE Commercial Real Estate Company handling the property next door and put the place up, and this place up for auction. I've, I've noticed that they placed, put other places, properties for auction around the state. I mean, we can put a minimum bid, say 20 million, 25 million, if it doesn't hit that, we don't sell it, simple as that. I'd like to see that happen because that is a big eyesore and it's costing us money and it will cost us money in the future. It's going to cost us millions. The other aspect I'd like to address is the central dispatch. If you've ever had to call the police or fire, you've probably been frustrated and I hope you don't blame the police or fire because it goes to Wyandotte. And I've had experience a couple of times of calling central dispatch and normally it would take them three or four minutes to get there to the police, took them 20 minutes and they apologized when they got there and it wasn't their fault. I was talking with the dispatcher and trying to explain, I was explaining exactly how the police would explain it to me, the location I live, how they've explained it, and I've explained it east and west and they kept on going north and south. So, please have some patience with the police and fire, it's not their fault if they're late. Also, one last point with the police, it's my understanding four officers retired last week is, am I correct?
In the last month.
Pardon me?
In about the last month.
In about the last month? Have they been recognized?
I don't, I don't know that they've retired, that's not, I don't know that that's a true statement.
Through the chair to clarify what's happening is they are submitting deferred retirement applications, which means they leave now, however, they do not collect till they hit the age. So, I would like to say, I think we, I think it is four and I think there's one more possibly, so a total of five.
So, they're no longer with the city?
They've severed their employment with the city and are deferring their pension till...
So, they're no longer with the city? So, my point is, I think they, I think they need some recognition. I mean, they did serve for a while, so I hope you give them some recognition. Thank you.
Hi, I like to see happy faces when I come up. Thank you, Dad. I had something prepared, but then Mr. Keen...
Your name, please.
Huh?
Your name, please.
My name is Mercy. I already gave it to you today, Mercy DiGiulio. Um, I had something prepared, but then a couple of things came up at the meeting. Can I have those papers that you have, Mr. Keenan? Can I have a copy of those?
I guess we'll have to talk to the chief.
Do we have to talk? Why do we have to talk to the chief?
I'll show you my copy, I don't have a copy.
I know, but I want to clarify something for you, okay? Because you say a lot of things like it's fact and actually what Mr. Hayes and the mayor said is more fact than what you said and you have the numbers and if you give me the numbers, because I was on the court committee, so I totally understand how it works, I can help you out with that. That money that you get collected, that 328,000 when you're saying, or whatever, that we paid 154 in overtime and we get 328 back, so we have more money back, it doesn't work quite like that, okay? That money goes to the court, whatever the court doesn't use, okay, we split two-thirds with Allen Park gets and one-third Melvindale gets and it doesn't matter what Melvindale brings in, it doesn't matter what Allen Park brings in. That's how the split is. So, until we know what the expenses are, Mr. Hayes was explaining it more correctly. You got to be careful because people can do anything with numbers. I just wanted to let you know. But if you give me those numbers, I'll show you exactly what we have, okay? So, will you share them with me?
I will show you them.
Okay. Um, you know, we had a couple of people come up here today too and I know they're kind of upset because they're retiring and they've worked for the city for 25, 30 years. I don't think anybody's talking about this stuff. We had an article in the paper where, and I know Mr. Messinger brought it up, you know, that somebody had moved a fence all the way over on another neighbor's property, you know, and this, this was an issue. And I guess this all culminates together here and I'm going to try and help you out for it. I'm not going to use any names, but at one time we had a city engineer who was not an engineer, but we paid him to be the city engineer. Um, when things got hairy because he wasn't an engineer, no, 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 when things got hairy and he wasn't an engineer, um, some very bad things happened to the sewer system over on Roosevelt and a company called, I can use the company, Gleason Construction versus City of Allen Park. Write that down and check into that, would you? Now, I know some allegations were made that this city employee wanted, I'm not sure what it was, it was boats or snowmobiles or something, but anyway, the City of Allen Park ended up paying out hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Point of order, Mayor.
And what do we do?
I know what she's referring to and I'd just like to say, that was found to be false and I'm not involved in it, but you're talking about misinformation, please get the facts right.
I, I have the facts right.
No, there's no one, no one was purchased a snowmobile that was found out.
No, I under, I understand. I understand. I'm not saying that, I'm saying that the Gleason Construction...
Keep going, I just want that.
All right, I still get more time now. Gleason Construction versus the City of Allen Park. I think we need to look at that because the City of Allen Park did end up paying hundreds of thousands of dollars on this court case. But ultimately what happened is somebody who did not have enough years to retire, which would have been eight, we retire as a city because our attorney, can I say our attorney's name at the time?
Yeah.
Because I think it's the same one you have now, dealing with labor, is Howard Schiffman, you know, made the deal and we retired this man and gave him and his family at a very young age with less than eight years seniority, full pension and benefits for the rest of his life. And these are the types of things that we cannot have go on in the city. This friends and family program needs to stop or the citizens are not going to vote for a millage. Until the corruption is gone, I, I know I'm not voting for a millage until the corruption's gone and from here on out until, until the, until the election, I will be bringing up one corruption every meeting. And if that's not good enough, I'll pass it out to the citizens and I'll have a sign with the corruption and the documentation on my front yard within two weeks. Thank you for your consideration and God bless you all. Bye. I love you, Dad.
Love you too, honey. Point of information through the chair, Mr. Giulio, I wasn't trying to dispute anything you were saying, I just want to make it clear that that was an old case and it was found out that the City of Allen Park was cleared of all charges. When you say we paid hundreds of thousands, are you stating we paid it to the company?
Correct.
We...
We paid Gleason Construction.
For a lawsuit? You're stating that for the record?
I'll, we'll have to look it up.
Okay, because...
I'm, I'm asking you to look up Gleason Construction versus the City of Allen Park.
And I'm just, I want facts to be straight here because there's so much mudslinging for...
The answer's straight that we retired somebody who was very young without enough...
Actually, and you stated less than eight years, you should make, and I'm sorry and I don't want to get into it, but it's this info, misinformation that's just killing me sitting here every week.
Okay.
Okay? He had over eight years, if it's the person I'm thinking of, and I don't mean to pick on you, Mr. Giulio.
We'll have to get together.
I don't want to, I apologize, I'm just hearing misinformation again and again. I'm sorry.
Okay, let's, Mr. Mensinger's at the microphone.
Thank you, that's all I want to point a clarification, it's Men, like your father and I, Singer, like a sewing machine, if you're going to quote me, it's Men Singer. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to the question. When you use the term corruption, you, you used a very...
Provocative.
...term that means a lot of negative things and if it's in rely, in regards to a fence, um, the, I talked to some people who have lived on that street. When that fence was placed, where it was placed, it was placed at the approval of the then-owner. The, um, gas line was then placed there. Clearly, um, once the new owner, very interesting because the article quotes a person who's not the owner of the house complaining about everything, but that's a whole different matter. The fence was moved, it was put over, the gas line's been moved to where it's on the right property and those matters have been corrected.
Was the permit obtained?
And, um, the, um, I, I don't think anybody has information to suggest that the matter is corruption. Yes, a neighbor who's lived there for 30-plus years and, and knows the other owner that sold to the present owner and knows the person who's on the other side of the present owner where they've had the boundary dispute, but it's a dispute and it's been resolved and it doesn't seem to me that the question of corruption should be used in that type of matter.
I agree with the mayor insofar as the term corruption shouldn't be used, but I disagree that the matter has been resolved. I've been to that home, the gas line was never moved, the water line was never moved, the report in the paper is in error and I've been there and I've witnessed this. I don't know who owns the house or whatever, but the guy who installed the fence lives in the house, whether he owns it or not, and he could be a renter for all I know, it doesn't matter. The fact of the matter is, there's bad information you're getting from our own people here and from the press and the press was maybe duped into believing that it was resolved, but it's absolutely not resolved. So, you should go down there yourself, that is still exposed and furthermore, this city ordered that particular homeowner to remove his fire pit, which he has not done, in defiance of what the order was from the ordinance officer. Instead, he planted flowers in it, I guess figuring like, soon as they forget, which this city is loath to do. They forget about trees every year, they forget about yards, they forget about everything and if we wait long enough, we'll forget about this fire pit and next summer he'll be having a barbecue out there in four feet from the fence that's just been installed. So, the problem here is endemic, that we have a forgetfulness or a purposeful forgetfulness, I don't know what it is, that problem is not resolved. Let me assure you and I invite anybody who'd like to, go down there and witness it for yourself. And there's other things that have been going on around that are, that are even more frightening than this little bit of information. So, pardon me for my interjection, but I felt I had to clarify the record. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Pat Turner. Good evening, I'm sorry, Mayor, Ms. Parker and Council. Pat Turner, I live on Morris Street and I'm the wife of Bob Turner. And I'm up here and I'm looking, I'm wanting to hear some hope, some help. I don't quite understand this, maybe you can give me some insight. All these years we've been paying taxes, we've had a millage, we've been paying taxes and we have a problem with rodents, rats, okay? We live in northern Allen Park, but that doesn't make a difference, we're a part of Allen Park. And then we have some dead trees and I was, we, we got these black bugs, okay? This is really, it may sound silly to you, but it's terrible to me. I was told that they're black, they're box elder bugs. They grow and they grow till they're... that they're black, they're box elder bugs. They grow and they grow until they're about three-quarters of an inch. In the late summer, early fall, to get into our back door, into our house, you have to go chase them away. So then they get in the sunroom, and they get on the ceiling for warmth. I have the wood rack out there, and a ladder. I climb up the ladder, and I've got the wood rack, and I suck them all in. This is a daily occurrence because of these trees, I'm told. And then the rat problem. If we, if the millage is approved, are we going to get any more help? That's my question.
Where are the trees, please?
They're in the lot next to us. There's the creek. There was Tom's nursery, although Tom has passed on. The creek, and then a bunch of trees. And there's some dead ones in there. And Lord Almighty, we've lived there seventeen years. Last year was the first year we got these bugs. My husband goes hunting about that time, so he doesn't know what I go through. But the dogs want to go outside, and I'm like, oh, no. I let you out, and ten bugs come in. I mean, they're really, I don't want them in my house. I'm sure you wouldn't want them in your house either.
But who owns the lot there? What are we talking about?
Who owns it, land, you mean?
Is it part of the county's?
Bob has been, Bob has been trying to get something done there.
I've talked to, I've talked to Mr. Warrencheck's office. I have not heard back from him. It's been three weeks now, but if you're talking about county property and that north branch of the Ekor's Creek.
Mm-hmm. Okay. What about the rats?
The what?
Rats. In our yard. The other night, other days, we do everything we can to try and to look very clean so they don't come. But they do go across to our neighbor's house, where they have a deck, and they get in under the deck, and Dublin, they have a family.
I don't think the city, Pat, can, can put any poisoning out for, I know that in the past, I think Harry brought that up a couple of weeks ago, that we used to give it out here at the city, and I don't know if Dave's here, but I think that we had to stop it because of liability. And people actually signed, I think, when they got it, some liability papers. But there's some questions as to dogs getting in it, and animals, and different things like that. So I agree with you. I mean, I've got them. I think we all have, I think everybody has them. I mean, you know, for me, when it happened, is when they tore up the sewer back behind, whenever they do any kind of construction, or the creek or whatever, they tore up the sewer back to do some sewer lining, and then all of a sudden, bam, we had rats. And I've been putting poisoning out for, you know, every year for four or five years now, and, you know, I get a couple and, and get rid of them. But I just, you know, I hear you, and I agree with you. I just don't know from a city standpoint if there's much that we can do about rats. It's just a matter of, you know, I mean, I know you don't want to hear it, but-
Oh, I hear you, Bob, and I understand it, because we have German miniature schnauzers. And the one was a pup. He was, he was just like, what, five pounds? He got a hold of some of that rat poison. And luckily, he's still alive. He's fourteen now. But my question is, if the millage is passed, what are we going to get in return?
I don't think you're going to do much with rats. It's not going to, but I will say, and I don't know if, I don't want to steal your thunder, but, you know, as Brian's made clear, and again, as I said before, he's usually right, the millage is for public safety. But as we've said before, and I know that numbers change, but I think, I think under the new budget that you potentially set out for July 1st, you know, the police budget, under her new, what she's outlined, that you folks haven't seen yet, was going to be about five point nine million, I think. Is that right?
For the total?
Was it four point nine?
Four point nine.
Four point nine. And then the fire on top of it, whatever those numbers together, it's still, it all comes out of the general fund. I mean, at the, at the end of the day, like Brian's made very clear, that money's going to be designated for, for police and fire. But it frees up other general fund money. And, and other general fund money can be used to put parks and, or public service people out there cutting down trees, that we have this huge backlog. It can be used to put people out there in the cold patch truck. It can, all those other things. It's a huge ripple effect. I've said that every time we've brought the millage forward, be it under Joyce or under this mayor and council. Everything that comes through the city gets paid out of the general fund. You know, all that money's collected in general fund, and it's earmarked for different, different areas. So, and forgive me the numbers, but let's say hypothetically, that police and fire is ten million dollars in, in her new budget going forward. And this millage brings in six million, all right? The city's still going to take four million dollars out of the general fund to subsidize police and fire. But it's a lot better than taking ten million dollars out of the general fund to subsidize police and fire. So in a sense, it frees up six million dollars hypothetically, with my hypothetical numbers. But all that money can be used for very, various things that have been brought up tonight, you know. You know, like I said, the ladies talked about the, the trees, and Don was here, or Doug was here, and talked about, you know, the backlog of trees and stuff. I mean, everybody knows that that's because we've, we've cut, the ASME employees in, in the Public Service Department, down to nothing.
Excuse me, how about the parking lot out here?
Well, ideally-
Has anybody thought about that?
Ideally, we'd get rid of this whole building.
I mean, I came in tonight, and I'm just bouncing and bouncing.
Ms. Turner, is the rat problem new this year?
Yeah. It's not new this year, but it's new to me personally, because the dogs, the dog found them. We have, Bobby has a hunting dog in the backyard.
No, I know he does. Okay. The only reason I ask that is, we, we just completed and opened in, what was it, last July, a new sewer for the-
Oh.
Princeton Estates.
That rustled a lot of mo-
And I just don't know, but let us look and see, see if there's something that's been changed there that we can do something about with the county.
Okay.
Pat, has Bob caught anything in the trap?
No.
He has, has he out there?
Oh, no. No.
He hasn't put it out yet? What did we buy it for, Bob? Huh?
He does put up traps for groundhogs. He puts out traps for opossums. And he then, when they're in the trap, he takes them over, where do you take them, Bob?
Well, don't tell that one.
Someplace over there.
Yes. Yeah, don't tell that one.
He doesn't let them out here, no.
Yeah, but letting them out in the next neighbor's place isn't the world's best disposal.
He's got like fifteen groundhogs or something.
Well, okay, I think, I think we understand your problem, okay?
Okay.
Let's see what we can do, Ms. Turner.
Hey, thanks for your help.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, just one other comment related to Mrs. Turner's questions or concerns about the rats. We can certainly check with the county to find out, again, if something has taken place that might have created a major issue or something. And then, secondly, a lot of communities have problems with rodents, and generally, there's some type of prevention program in place, and information is provided to residents to assist in that regard. I can provide to Mrs. Turner some brochures that shares information on what you can do related to situations like that as well. And then, you know, just to clarify, one comment related to what you get with the millage, and how that impacts the city's general operating fund. I think if, in a best-case scenario, if the city did not have the deficit of four million dollars, there might be money to do a number of things if the police-fire millage was actually passed. However, the issue that the city is faced with is the deficit, which mean that without additional revenue or the reduction, substantial reduction in services, the city would not be able to balance its general operating fund. So, you know, as you talk about the reduction in services, what is being proposed is that the millage would maintain existing levels of services for police and fire. And there is a dedicated fund in place where those dollars would be monitored to ensure that they would be used for that purpose. With the millage, the total amount related to the increase is about two million dollars, which would bring the city up to about four point nine million dollars. But the cost associated with police-fire services is a little over ten million dollars. And so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Just for everybody's sake, our, our timer has died. The battery's died. So I'm using my phone, but-
Is that why Ms. Turner got twenty minutes?
Yeah, I'm going to have to poke the mayor and have him beep when it's, when it's-
Well, in that case, I promise you, I will only take one minute. My name is Gene Reden. I live on Brody Street here in Allen Park, and just wanted to say thank you.